Danica missed the last meeting to.
Yeah, surgery, sorry.
That's a good reason.
Everyone's got excuses now. New baby, surgery, what was your excuse?
For the last meeting?
Yeah.
Let's see, I've been having to work extra all that really.
There it is.
I know this is recorded a lot. It's ridiculous.
For your pickup buddies.
Yeah, he bought another couple stores in town, so I'm having to transition, um, what was this? Chopped the English speaking people into the Senate family.
Because things were going so well there, we needed more.
So, I've been working on what's in its fall.
No other cars?
You're in charge. If you'd have been here for the special meeting and the reorganization of the board, you would know. Yep, five book two it is. Welcome back, Danica.
Thank you.
Emily, thanks for joining.
Thank you for having me.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of minutes.
I looked through them.
Yeah, you missed the last separate meeting. They're getting to go.
Oh, they're paying you well.
I know, right? Do you want to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll say.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Approval of expenditures.
Make a motion to approve payroll and one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Claims and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. An activity account of twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents.
Is this where I'd ask a question?
Yeah.
Right here, right now? Okay, um, I can't, I haven't found it, but when I saw it on my phone, it was a question about, um, the second semester, uh.
Transportation reimbursements.
Yes.
It's on page one of the contract?
We have.
Right here on the bottom?
We have three families that live beyond the school and we pay them to thirty-five cents a mile, um, to drive their kiddos to school and back in lieu of having bus.
Okay. Okay, so, um, what is the, is it that they're supposed to be? Forty miles further?
So, you gotta be at least three miles away from the school. What happens, say somebody's ten miles from the school.
Okay.
Um, when we go to do the reimbursement, we subtract those three miles. So, they would only get reimbursed for seven miles here and seven miles back. And that's at a rate of thirty-five cents per mile. So, whatever fourteen miles takes thirty-five cents, that would be their daily rate. So, every day, I check with Mariah to see what their attendance was, if they missed any days, that sort of thing. And then I calculate, um, the first semester in February, the second semester in June. And they get reimbursed twice a year.
Geez, that's cheap.
That's what the law says, that's what we're doing.
I charge five dollars. Might be more accurate.
Right?
Seriously.
That's why I charge, right, so what's in the invoice when we come out head to Utah? Five bucks a mile.
So then, I could see on there, which I'm not seeing here, who those were, uh.
So, Danica's one of them. And then we have Dustin Hoon.
Okay.
And then we have Tessa.
Okay, and then I thought I saw Jill Wilson, does she get mileage?
She gets mileage for running, so like when she does stuff at the school, when she goes to Costco or to trainings, or what she did is she put in a full year's worth of mileage.
Okay.
For an individual reimbursement, that's typically what she does every year. Yeah.
So, did those look right to you guys here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I will make them, did somebody make?
Yeah, we should wait on your second.
My second, my second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Communications, principal report.
Well, the school year's over. We made it.
We made it.
But, we're still here, uh, so we're running the summer program right now. And that goes through this Friday for the June program. And then we'll have an August program, uh, starting August nineteenth. So, going back to May, um, third through fifth grade went on a natural history field trip to Lee Metcalf Wildlife on the thirteenth. And that was part of the, um, Montana Natural History Museum grant. So, we had grants to help fund that program from Network Financial. I took a field trip of kindergarten through second grade to Fort Missoula and Turner Farms. And they have Grammy baby goats at, um, Turner Farms, I can show you.
My photo op, maybe probably.
If you haven't seen it already. They were very cute and the goats are definitely good. So that, and it worked out, that was a beautiful day. Um, and we had to change our Lake Como trip, uh, because of weather. And we walked out on the twenty-eighth, uh, it started thundering and raining down there, uh, right after we left. Field day, we have on the twenty-ninth, uh, we did get some rain for that. Uh, we had eighth grade graduation and kindergarten promotion. And we had an end of the year assembly. And on the twenty-first, I had D and R C come out and actually kind of do a walk around with me around the property and make some recommendations, uh, to be more fire safe. So, there was, so, several little things, um, a few trees they recommended cutting down. We've already worked removing some of the brush, the landscaping company's done that, weed whacking and removing things, uh, to make sure that, um, we knocked some of that down before fire season, so they had some good recommendations. Besides removing a couple trees and, uh, not most of them are pretty small recommendations. Um, I've also had some contractors out to give bids, but I'll talk about that, um, in a general item. Moving on, do this summer school week and then we'll have a week of working with, um, different folks in paperwork. Mrs. Cruz and I will be, uh, working the week of the tent. And then the seventeenth through the twentieth, um, myself, Mrs. Bishop and, um, Ms. Grubow are going to the OPI conference and votes. And we have a grant to do that. So, we'll be learning all kinds of stuff.
Okay, so you had some, um, groups coming in, in the summer for classes, right?
Right.
How many students were there?
Uh, we have eighteen this week. Plus, down to thirty-five, and it looks about the same, uh, and probably will be more because we'll probably pick up a few new kindergarten nurses and four-year-olds in August.
Okay, awesome.
But we are renting the classes for the program as well. Um, so, when we wrote that ELO grant using COVID money, we also put a grant in for summer. That's separate from the after-school program for the school year. And so that's what we're using to pay for this, for the salaries as well as the busing, food, supplies. This is all grant funded, uh, through COVID, uh, S or ELO. So, we would not be able to do this, um, without that grant funding, the way it is in prevent busting and whatnot. Because all that adds up.
Is that the last of it then?
So, in September is the due date for all S or COVID monies and it'll be completely.
Gone.
But, we're doing some exciting things, um, Friday, we're gonna go to Butte and take a nice long field trip and go to the World Museum of Mining. Go to an orphan girl mine, uh, and a tour for that. And we're going to go to Montana Tech, uh, to the Rock and Mineral Museum there. Uh, and then in August, we have Arthur Speed Collar coming out and I think it's gonna be nature. We're going to field trip them and do some bird watching, uh, do lots of, um, reading activities around nature and animals and whatnot. Lots of fun stuff we have.
If you haven't done the orphan mine, you gotta check it out, it's awesome.
I would like to, I've looked into that. I would think that would be awesome.
You got water grass underground.
Yes, I think that sounds really cool.
Um, so that's what I've got, um, facilities, um, we've had, um, a landscaping company coming out. Uh, and they did a lot of weed whacking, they've done a lot of other little things around. Um, and then, um, yeah, I think everything else, facilities, I'll talk about, the projects. Uh, and then for parent communication, we had a barbecue the same day as field day. Ranch don making some wonderful burgers. That's really good burger.
It's an superhero deal.
Some good meat. Uh, but yeah, we have all kinds of food from all the parents donated with huge barbecue. And, uh, the weather wasn't as good as we would have liked, but still lots of fun. Actually, funny thing is the races we were running down in the driveway to the ranch. And it wasn't too bad at first when they were running the relay races. But then, right as the last race ended and it was time to go back, it just starts pouring. That's what I've got for reports and any questions.
Cool, sounds good.
I think we should, uh, rename the general purpose section to questions from Danica.
Our best audience ever.
Hey, maybe more people will join, we'll see.
General purpose, anything from public? Additions and acceptance.
Uh, we do have additions, um, but so I would like to add to the agenda a multi-district agreement. Uh, this Lolo School District and that was Superintendent Olinger. Um, so I'd like to talk to the district about the possibility of this agreement.
Oh, doing what now?
A multi-district agreement for funds, I'll get more into it. And I have copies for you all.
Oh, talking about it.
There was something else, I'm really talking about earlier today, I just had it, my brain doesn't too long with stuff for very long. Um, there was something else we were going to, what was it? What are we talking about today?
Oh, actually, I'll just talk about this as carbon life report going back, um, so in.
You remember, I still don't.
So, in my work with legal counsel, um, I had them going through our handbooks, um, to make sure everything, um, like kind of lines changing, there's different federal laws changing on to make sure everything was on today. Well, through that process, they went through our, all of our policies and they found out that there's a lot of out-of-date policies that need updated. Um, so.
Policies compacted, aren't you?
Our lawyer has recommended that she do a complete overhaul of her policy manual.
Still working on it, are you changing it all yet?
She did it ten years ago, so I guess we'll probably do.
Yeah, I was wondering that, how that book stays current that I've been reading through.
Well, it stays current, usually we get updates and we add those, just like we did this year. Uh, but it looks like in the past, there's been several things missed or not revised. Uh, and that can be going back a decade or so. Um, so she's, um, highly recommended, uh, and I would recommend because, well, your recommended, that, uh, we have her completely go through it and, um, to recommend any revisions for policies that we could be missing or needing.
So then we'll get, we'll get updated policies to put our book right over there?
Yeah, that you all have to move on.
Okay, good.
So, if the board's okay with that, I will move forward.
Yeah. Sounds like it's necessary.
Yeah.
General side, let's get over this time. Old business. Status of custodian search. Discussion possible motion.
I don't have any motion for you today for recommendation. Uh, we have had several applications, um, and we've reached out to people, still trying to set up. So, we're still working on that, um, hopefully by the next meeting, then we'll have a recommendation for that for you. And if anyone knows anyone, um, tell them to get in touch with one of us.
So, work buddy's done at this point, though.
See, so we have in the next meeting.
I read it in here, I was just checking.
Well, we made that decision just to make it clean with May being the end date.
Right.
And, um, I'm just kind of doing the cleaning after the summer, so there's not that much, you know, by day.
Even after they cook in there, are they going to?
The kids are helping with the cleanup too.
Oh, okay, good, good.
And actually, the kids are great every day when I get lunch and stuff, they help me clean up their own messes. And they like to fold the tables and house sweep.
Twenty-four, twenty-five out of district students.
So, I have an exhibit for them. And this exhibit has the grade level of the student, uh, that they'll be going into, as well as I assign a student number to the student. Um, so as we make motions, instead of using student names, we can use the student number. So, I'd like to update you on our numbers of where we're at. Um, because you passed a policy recently that outlines out of district enrollment for students. Um, and we've had some staffing changes since then. Um, so the cutoff is seventy-five percent. So, that's the level where we would say that we are full for out-of-district students. Um, and with not rehiring a fourth teacher, uh, what that will mean is there will be times where the older grades are combined for like PE and whatnot. Um, so that actually will put that, uh, classroom for like PE and whatnot at nineteen. Um, so that means that, uh, second through eighth grade, uh, is at the seventy-five percent mark. We actually do not have room for out-of-district students at that grade level. Um, we have one four-year-old literacy program student on the, uh, docket here. And that would be the seventy-five percent cutoff if you approved that student today. Uh, so with ex- acceptance of that student, we would be full after that child.
And for many of the, in that literacy.
Uh, so, that, this would be the second child in the program, but in the classroom, it'd be number fifteen, uh, which would be the seventy-five percent cutoff. So, my recommendation based upon our policy and Montana accreditation standards is that we would approve the student for the four-year-old literacy program, but that we are not able to approve the fourth and seventh grader, uh, based upon, um, our student numbers and our policy. Is my recommendation. And that would also mean, moving forward for the next meeting, uh, that we truly are full. You may want to make two separate motions for approval.
One to accept, one to deny.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to accept, uh, student number five or four Y O A T.
I'll say.
Oh. That?
Nope. Wait.
I'll say.
Same thing? All in pair.
I.
Aye. Motion carried.
And I also make a motion to not accept forty-five B C and seventy-eight C C based on our seventy-five percent being full.
Sorry.
Just one quick, quick question, are these new, um, okay, so, previous students that you've already?
That's already done.
That's it?
So, so everyone who applied that's currently here that turned in an application has been accepted.
Yeah, that was, that was a good, good question.
Last meeting, we did that one.
Okay.
All in pair.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. New business. Twenty-four, twenty-five election contract.
So, it's last two pages in your packet there, it's the one we do every year. It pretty much says that if we happen to have an election during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we want Missoula County elections to take care of it.
So, we don't do it here?
Right, it'll be just like we always do, they'll take care of the mail ballots, they will put the ads in the paper, they will do all the everythings and then send us a bill afterwards, which the bill's very inexpensive. It's, oh, we, ours is so tiny that it doesn't cost a whole lot to run an election for us. Um, but yeah, it means they'll just take care of everything.
So, the opposite of doing that, because I've done that, is that.
Horrible.
The district would hire, the election judges, they would hire an election administrator, all that would be on the district. And the counting would be on us, because I've helped participate in that and it's a lot.
Ten years at Big Four, oh, three months of elections, it was a lot.
Oh, yeah, thanks. We used to have the elections up here at the school.
And, and they still could choose to use this as an election site, the county, but now almost everything is mail-in now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the twenty-eight, twenty-four, twenty-five election contract.
Okay, so, I say.
All in pair.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Possible future facility projects.
So, I've been working on compiling some numbers for things and also going through the facility, looking at everything that has been updated and things that haven't been updated. Uh, we recently approved two big projects, uh, one for the blinds and one for HVAC systems in this building. So, two big things for the summer have already been approved. Um, but I wanted to give you an idea of things that still need to be done at some point. And maybe, um, the board would like to tackle something else this summer. Or maybe we want to wait, uh, until the next summer. Um, just want to kind of give you an idea of what's going on. Uh, in addition, kind of going back to that tour, um, some of that stuff kind of goes along with that. Do you want to talk about building reserve?
Yeah, so, we end up between the voted levy that we still have for two more years and our purpose of levy that we're allowed to levy every year. Um, our total building reserve, I don't have final numbers, but it always comes in right around thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, starting July first, we'll have another thirty-eight thousand dollars to spend we have spent out for this year. Um, we had to put the down payment on the blinds and then we had to, um, they've already got, I think, most of the equipment in for the furnace replacement. Um, so, that kind of, you know, yielded for the year. Um, so, that thirty-eight thousand, um, probably about eight of that will cover the rest of the blinds and the remaining bit of the furnace. Which leaves us about thirty thousand dollars for next year, um, to consider for other projects.
What I'm gonna do is go building by building, um, and highlight things that still need to be done. Uh, for building ones, the old building, um, has not had a new roof recently. These two buildings have, building three was just, um, last summer. Um, so that's something to keep in the back of your mind, you'll probably want to do that before the building reserve, uh, levy runs out. So, probably, what they're, uh.
They ran, uh, it was anywhere between twenty and twenty-seven thousand. I know, going back far enough, when we completed the first building, it was a few thousand dollars less. The last building, I think, was right around twenty-six, if I'm remembering right. Um, so I would, I would guess.
This is much smaller, isn't it?
I think building one is smaller.
It is smaller, um, but prices have also gone up.
Yeah.
So, I'm estimating probably twenty-five grand on the high end, would you make a guess? And that's just total guess, I don't have a quote on that. That's not something I recommend for this summer, uh, I'd say the next summer or the summer after that. We should do that. Um, the other thing that needs to happen in building one is there's three really old windows that will need to be replaced at some point. Um, they replace most of the windows, all the bigger ones, but there's three small ones that don't need to be replaced. Um, I did get one quote and if we were to move forward, I'd get a few more quotes before deciding. Uh, but that's looking about four thousand in the first quarter.
Windows are crazy. Everything's crazy.
The other thing would be, uh, the basement, just to note, and this isn't necessarily a major thing, but I did find out it leaks. Um, so at some point, we need to look at seating in those cracks, doing some sort of cement or something. Moving on to building two, this building, um, so one of the things that needs to done, be done at some point is the front porch out there. Uh, the concrete needs either repaired or replaced. And the beams also have issues, uh, where they attach to the cement. Um, so some major work needs to be done on that. Um, but the exterior doors, all four of them, continue to have major issues, even though I've had them worked on. Um, they are just, um, at the end of their life, um, not only on the hardware, but on the door itself. Um, today, I've seen the weather stripping, even though I had that installed, you can see the outside again. Um, the doors just underneath them have completely worn down. Um, and I've had a hard time getting a contractor that's willing to do like industrial doors. Um, a lot of people have just said, no, they're like, oh, we'll do like a home door for you, but we're not gonna do an industrial door. Um, so I finally called, uh, Jackson Contacting Group, uh, because they are one of the main firms that builds new schools. And I mostly wanted to see, hey, who do you know that does school doors and industrial doors like that? Um, and they said, oh, well, we would do that, so they actually came out and gave me a quote. And to fix the doors and to replace the five doors, four here and one in building three is completely rusting out. Um, and reconnect them to the security system, um, which was expensive. It's twenty-seven thousand.
Wow.
Yeah. Lot of money.
So, I think we need another bid.
How to get back, how to get in the doors apparently, oh my gosh.
Um, but to keep on your radar, it's something we're gonna have to get done at some point.
Have you called, uh, um, like BMC? In Missoula, they do doors, I thought. And, uh, and, uh, um, Garden City Glass, we've done some of those.
Do you know if they do industrial?
Yeah, they, well, they do the post office.
Sure, what's so fancy about them, they're just steel. Just a.
Probably hooking it back up to that security system is what's the big challenge.
Yeah. Because the security system has to subcontract and come back out and install things, so that's three to five thousand dollars right there.
Just for hooking up the security system with it.
Yep. Right? Kids are so expensive. Um, but just to keep in the.
You move for five doors, I mean, it's really, that's awful, it's so crazy.
So, I'll keep working on more bids, make some more calls.
Which one you want first, the door or the roof?
The door. I, I, that door out there, every day. And, and it's just so difficult though.
There's gotta be some local contractors that would do, do industrial doors.
What type of?
We've used Juicy and, uh.
There's, it's a stick building.
Yeah.
It's not brick and mortar, it's stick. So, you're just screwing it up.
I think it's not like every other door, it's just.
Yeah, it's just steel.
Yeah, yeah.
And moving on, one of the things I've noticed in the kitchen in this building is the linoleum is bubbling up. So, that's something that we'll either need repaired or replaced at some point. The other thing, we've talked about this before, I know we talked on the tour, is getting a full remodel on these two bathrooms in here. Um, they definitely need a lot of TLC. They need new stalls, they need new sinks, I mean, the water here is really hard on things. Um, they needed a paint job. I did a quickie patch and the girls wanted in there on the ceiling because it was crumbling, um, things like that. Um, so, they could really use a full remodel, so I did get one quote on that to kind of have an idea. Um, so that was ten thousand dollars I came in for the bathroom.
For both, that's pretty good.
I think that was pretty good, yeah, with new sinks, um, flooring, painting, roofs, stalls.
I think we could lose through that on a longer.
Yeah, so I thought that was a pretty good, uh, quote, um, but that's something that could really be used, um, done in the next couple of years as well. Moving on to building three. Uh, we really need to put a small heater in the office, it currently has no heat except for residual. Um, and we could put a cadet heater similar to what we put into the library into that, uh, from an electrician for probably about a thousand bucks. So that's something that we want to get done at some point.
Is it cadet, what is a cadet, a baseball?
No, so the really tiny ones, like a box.
It's stuck in the wall.
I can show you afterwards on.
They're a hundred bucks, but you can go to Ace and get one plugged in.
Yeah. And then the fire alarm.
I was just gonna say, don't let the fire alarm see it.
And we get inspected every year. Uh, one thing also to think about in those bathrooms, they're not too bad, but the lighting, um, is so bad, it's horrible. I mean, you can barely see it.
You can barely tell it's on, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something, uh, like if we had the electrician put a heater in, it'd be great to put a nice bright like LED light in those bathrooms so you could actually see as you're using the restroom. Um, sorry. Um, also the door, uh, there's one door out of the, the five, the one that was in Mr. Mitchell's room that's rusted out and it's replaced. Um, outside, uh, one thing I'd like to do is get some more stone for the, um, the, um, no, for the, um, flower beds, I think it's, uh, the riverstone. Um, and one of the recommendations from D N R C was to put stone around building three, that side there, there's no, it's grass, only in that one spot. And they said, really, we need to do like we did everywhere else and have stone around and not have the grass in the building. Um, so that's just a small area. Um, I could probably do a couple of ones if I pick up a truck to be honest, to get that out. Um, and then the, um, parking lot and the, um, driveway and everything. Jase, uh, graded that and then, um, Joe, um, McIlvery came back over the parking lot with his, um, roller.
A roller.
And whatnot, and, um, smoothed it even more, um, so it's looking a lot better. One thing that Joe mentioned to me while he was doing that was that he'd be willing to come in and do a sidewalk along the parking lot. Um, he has the forms for that for sidewalks apparently, and all we would have to do is pay for the cement.
Yeah, we just have to figure out how long it's gonna be and tell Joe to get a price on the concrete.
Yeah, so if we wanted to.
So instead of doing like the boulders or something, do a curved sidewalk.
Curved, yeah. So they have a curve like a.
Well, yeah, I mean, they ain't gonna be flush with the ground, it's gonna be, uh,
Yeah, that'd be good.
And it would be a part, like a parking curb almost too.
Would we want to work out like rails, you know, like on the stairs that we have?
I wouldn't, cause then you're gonna have to have an opening every few feet. Where else, you're still gonna be walking through the parking lot to get to the cars versus just being able to walk in the front and.
So new rules for the kids to stay on the sidewalk.
Yeah, it don't work as it is now.
So the curb would be the wrong thing to where they can't, they'd have to drive up over the top of that to get a kid.
Yeah, I'm sure. It wouldn't probably, it'd still probably just be.
Yep.
So hopefully everybody can drive safe, okay.
And give kids more room to walk.
Yeah, I mean, cause there's days you pull up and, like, you'll start the line and pretty soon you notice the line's angled forward and the last car is touching the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so if you'd like me to have him price out the concrete, I'm sure Jase or I could talk to him and then bring it back to you. Sounds like a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
I think it's better to do a big boulder for something. I mean, I'd be willing to donate the boulders, I've got plenty of that.
So that is what I've got for possible projects, lots of other little things in my mind. So I don't know if you want to make a motion on something you'd really like to accomplish this summer or, or your things.
How's about, you get that list and put it in the order you want. Do you want your windows?
I think not with the bathrooms out, would be for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, but like, you can do like the bathrooms and maybe the windows or.
There's only what, eight, eight thousand left for the windows, is that right?
No, 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 it's thirty for, we've got thirty thousand total, so depending on what you decide to.
No, there's a. We would have thirty grand total. So if we did the ten thousand dollar bathrooms, then we'd have twenty to do something else, whether it be the few windows or.
Yeah, it sounds like you need to get a bit on those doors to a couple more bids, if those are necessary, it sounds like those are kind of high priority too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if we do the bathrooms, we can do the doors.
Really?
If we do the doors, we don't get to do anything else.
Unless somebody comes in for us in twenty minutes.
Doors are nothing.
So my, here's my thought, is the bathrooms, I feel like the ten thousand's very doable for this summer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then I continue to try to find a contractor for next summer to replace all the doors, hopefully cheaper. And then the summer after that, we do the rest. I'll have to have somebody do some light repairs and stuff.
So you're thinking right now, do the bathrooms, the windows?
Think, wait on the windows too.
I think the electrical of our building too, the building three actually.
Do the. You did, the wind, the, the bathrooms, the heater and the lights.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a start.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how good, how much you want a heater in the summer, but yeah.
I'd rather get a discount, cause it is summer.
They won't. Okay, I mean, if somebody wants to make.
Make a motion for the bathrooms, do we even have a bid for the heater?
Um, I did have an electric company, I think it was, uh, it was about a grand. This was quite some time ago, when they were working on the heaters.
Maybe we could go building and coming back up and.
There you go.
I think he was the one that had the quote from.
So. Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do the bathrooms, the light and the heater in that office.
All of the pair?
Aye.
Aye.
Right? Motion carried. Passed upcoming events?
We have one more thing.
Oh.
Multidistrict.
See, it's not, it's not in the lineup here.
Yeah.
And you said there wasn't much, it was gonna be quick.
I got chatty about facility, sorry. So multi-district agreement, this is an agreement with another entity to go into partnership with, um, having basically a bank account. Um, so one of the things, um, that happens is in a general fund, that money has to be spent by the end of the year. You use it or you lose it. Um, some different funds, that is the case, the general fund and some of the other funds is the, that is the case. Um, we don't usually end up having a huge amount left at the end of the year where a smaller district, um, you know, it might be a matter of thousands. What's the most we've ever had probably?
Oh, gosh, it's been a few years, we've had different reserves for a couple times over the last four or five. Yeah, it's, it's usually not, definitely less than ten thousand, I mean, it's closer to just a couple, two or three thousand. And that's from the general fund, that's the general fund, um, like, if we have anything left this year, it's going into reserves. For the most part, because we're going to, to cushion us for upcoming years. Um, but yeah, but if you, I mean, there are some schools that have tens of thousands of dollars left at the end of the year.
When, when I was at Knox and we were in elementary and a high school district similar to CPS, but we had a multi-district agreement between our two separate school districts. And, uh, we had built up over a hundred thousand dollars in, on the multi-district, uh, fund by saving those year-end monies. Um, but Lolo reached out to us, I met with Superintendent Hollinger, and they would like to partner with us to have a multi-district agreement to be able to put any monies that either district may want to put into this, it's kind of works like a savings account. Um, the money we put in would be ours and we could take out. The money they put in would be theirs and they could take out. And then, um, they, they would divide, uh, the interest, uh, between us. Um, it opens possibilities, we don't even have to put in money, we could put just a little bit in to have it there. Um, but it opens options and it also, um, helps another district next to us. Um, it's great to build partnerships, um, there's really no downside.
How does it help?
Uh, being able to save that money if we did have.
Give more interest?
Um, and just being able to put that general fund money away.
So like Lolo right now, they get to the end of the year, you can only put a certain percentage into reserves. And once you hit that maximum, if you have any leftover, it essentially goes back to the state. What this does is gives you another option as to where to put that extra money that you could use for later. And so it's a, it's a legitimate ways not to have to send it back. Um, but then it's there and have it for future years.
Um, they have agreed to front all costs for the paperwork for filing it. Uh, they've also agreed to be the custodian and have their clerk do the paperwork and keep track of it. So really, there's no cost to us, um, we're just entering into a partnership and if we choose to put some money in the general fund into there, if we have enough, we have that option and then it renew, it can renew every three years or the woman can choose not to. Um, so my recommendation would be to enter into a multi-district agreement with all those.
What do you think, Jim?
What's happening?
Good idea. I can't, well, at the moment, I've not seen any reason not to. It's basically protects, when the state take back.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's.
Issues to make middle finger to the state.
Which I said, I make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the multi-district agreement with Lolo's one we've got.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe one of these years, let's say, we'll give us a ton of money and we'll have money to put in.
That's right.
Motion carries. Passed upcoming events?
When we're behind in.
Yeah.
It sounds so like if we're, if we were, I'm sorry. So when we did get the levy that was passed, can you use that for our budget?
If we had money in there, you could.
If you, there.
Yeah, say we had forty grand in there, we could hire a teacher.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like a savings account.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's no limits, it's not like title money where you have to use it for particular things, it can be.
Over.
Anybody have any issues with July first?
Oh, maybe.
It's the first and the day of July.
Are you gonna have bills or have to do a special meeting to pay bills or?
Well, July is kind of different because it's just kind of wrapping up June and there's not a whole lot going on, so July first is fine and I'm gone on the eighth, so.
Vacation time, huh?
And I've set a contractor to work up on the first, assuming we'd be here, they're gonna put the blinds in that thing.
First works for me. First for me.
Okay, just checking before I announce it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jase.
Will you do me a favor and pull out your phone and put it in your calendar and set a reminder? Next meeting, July first, five o'clock. This meeting is adjourned at five forty-five.